We'll begin with the prayer. I'll say the prayer and followed by the pledge led by Councilman Glavin. If you'll stand and just bow for a moment. We lie down in peace, knowing our sins are forgiven. We lie down in peace, knowing death has no fear. We lie down in peace, knowing no powers can harm us. We lie down in peace, knowing angels are near. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
So a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm ood.
Second.
By Mr. Lawrence. The second by Mr. Guines. Is there any discussion?
None.
There being no discussion, we'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's a six oh vote for the clerk. All right, Mr. Mayor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Want to welcome everyone's smiling faces here today at the first meeting in August and look forward to what cooler weather in November. So anyway, I do want to welcome everyone. And I think Kay is here and I'd like to ask her up. I don't know whether Ivan is here or not, but there's an award Main Street wants to present to Ivan.
It's ours.
Okay.
It's ours. I'm president of the Lunn.
This is for innovative things that were done downtown and Kay will hand you the microphone.
Okay. Okay, Biloxi Main Street submitted an award nomination for a Mississippi Main Street award. It was a design award for the Bella as an outstanding adapted project. The Bella is a Miami beach-inspired collection of 13 short-term rentals and Ivan and Ivan Spinner designed the property's vibe to take the short-term rental experience to a new level. Each suite is unique and it's a destination unto itself. They purchased the old 12 Fargo building on Hubbard Avenue in 2021 from 1977 and they transformed it into a heart park, music-infused set of vacation rentals, each with its own theme. And in September of 2023, it opened and also the Brew title cafe bakery completing it now as a destination location. So Biloxi Main Street.
On behalf of Mississippi Main Street would like to present this award and congratulations to the Bella and Tyler Muzial on behalf of Ivan Spinner. Thank you so much.
All right.
And the last thing I have on my report is would you ask the council to spread the expenses of the Biloxi travel credit card to the minutes. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question about the travel expense and looking there are two items this month and one of it says travel expense, but there's a purchase for grommets for a training facility. Do we put things on this card other than travel-associated expenses? And are we able to do that?
Yeah, yes and yes.
Yes and yes.
Colonel.
Okay, so it's a city's expense card.
Yeah.
And it can be used for travel or non-travel expenses, just generally referred to as a travel expense credit card. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mike. And thank you, Mr. Muzial, for being here. Congratulations, if you're still here. Okay. Thank you, Kay, for the presentation. Next, we have no departmental reports. Council reports. I'd like to start here in Ward Seven with one of our new council members, Mr. Shoemaker.
Thank you. Just a few things, Mayor, regarding Public Works. I just had a question. It seems like we had an employee at some point or somebody at Public Works that could actually, I don't know if they, I guess, installed water taps when we had new residents, somebody building a house. We have to, you know, they have to have the taps.
Yeah.
That hooks into the water. Do we know now if we have somebody or do we have to contract that out?
Tim Moran, yeah.
So as of now, we're just having to contract those out?
Right, right.
M.Dot. M.Dot, you know, they're working on the roundabout still. They've gotten a lot done. I know I've been trying to give everybody an update weekly and they have gotten a good bit done. They dug up, I think they made a mistake on some concrete, unfortunately had to dig it back up on stamping some concrete, which set them behind a little bit. That wasn't M.Dot. From my understanding, that was the actual company that was doing the stamping of the concrete. But that's been rectified. When I came to the meeting today, they had about half of that redone. So hopefully they'll have some good weather and continue on with that. And I think lastly I have, as always, drainage ditches, grass and culverts, you know, Public Works is getting to some of the grass, some of it. Ditches are still extremely high. The right-of-way, some of the right-of-ways are being cut, the ditches themselves, unfortunately, I think are still issues, holding water, having a lot of drainage issues with all the rain we've had lately. And I guess I believe that's it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Mr. Glavin.
Yep. I got a couple of things. I'll try to do the sandwich method here and start with a positive, end with a positive. I'm glad to see an update on the tennis court lighting with the LED lights being installed. Looks like that's still rocking along and going to be fully functional soon. So I greatly appreciate that. Also, all the sod looks like it's been laid down at soccer field at A.J. Holloway Sportsplex. I see them watering it and trying to get it to take. So that's going to be a great addition as we roll into soccer at the end of the quarter. But I want to, I want to talk about a couple of other things, and this is grass cutting as well. The first one is the CSX railroad. Do we contact them when we notice that there's grass that needs to be cut? Or do we cut the right-of-way? Or do we have a right-of-way we cut along the railroad tracks?
Public Works contacts them. Is that right?
They cut it off. First cut, CSX cut.
Okay, so the process, if there is, if somebody reports there's some grass along CSX that's high, we just turn it in to Craig Ross or somebody like that and then they'll take it from there? Okay. Thank you for that. I had a lady contact me about Hudson Cron Road and she was been complaining about grass cutting along Hudson Cron as well. And what concerns me, not necessarily her contacting me and complaining, but she said she contacted Public Works and they told her that the lawnmowers were broken. And here it is, August, she said she's reported it numerous times. And I don't know who she spoke to, so I don't, I can't defend that. But I'm just telling you, I'm giving you the feedback that she has told me. I did send a text message. I didn't, I usually send it to Craig Ross, but I did send a text message, kind of letting the administration know about the complaint that I got there. And then generally, and listen, I know how hot it is out there. I know how hard it is to cut grass, but that is the responsibility of that department. And even when the grass is cut at times, it's sloppy. The sidewalks, they don't use the roundup or to spray in the cracks to make sure the grass isn't growing up through the cracks of the sidewalk. And along the striping on the side of the road, we got grass that's shooting up lining that, the striping along the side of the road. So, you know, I would hope in some of these meetings, maybe that can be brought out. I'm just being bluntly honest at these meetings that, you know, Biloxi can do better than that. And I know we want to do better. I just maybe as a rush to get, get a lot of these jobs done, we're just rushing through it, trying to get to the other jobs and work orders that is piling up. But I did want to bring that up. All right, so ending on a positive. I attended a Shuckers game last week with Coastal Mississippi. Barry Lyons gave a real motivating speech to the group. And we left a little early. The Shuckers were winning. They actually won the game. But as we walked to our car under the I-110 bridge, First Friday was going on. You could hear the music. They were playing some nostalgia eighties music. Styx, Come Sail Away was, was playing. It sounded really, really good. The band was actually the network, Robert Collier and that group. The acoustics was incredible and it just sounded like what Biloxi should sound like on a Friday night in August. So I did want to end with that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. Another new councilman, Mr. McGilvery.
Just a couple of things. Mayor, I'd like to thank you and Ms. Bell regarding your assistance in the playground behind Margaret Sherry and the dog park. We've been working real close the last couple of weeks. Got a couple of things that you have approved for both locations and doing some work and getting those things repaired and everything. I want to thank you for that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Guines.
All right, all right. First, I want to thank the mayor and the administration for coming out from award meeting. We had a great time and a lot of good information. Also, I'd like to thank Public Works for fixing that light, the Nichols light with the school light. And I really appreciate that's been bothersome for a little while. I wanted to ask the mayor to kind of look into something for me. I know we need some grass cutting going down Division Street, but as the ramp, I know that that property belongs to.
I'm done.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that the state owns it.
We need to take care of it.
Right, but yeah, and I've turned it in and it kind of got rejected back to me. So if we could either get them to do it or some of our guys to go ahead and knock that out, I would appreciate it because that's kind of like our front door coming into Keith Sloan. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence.
Y'all got a little time?
I have the gavel.
Well, you can keep it. Well, you ain't president yet. Later. As you can see, Mayor, the town needs to be cleaned up. Do we have anybody that actually goes around and looks at all the city stuff that's not cleaned up? City property? City streets? Do we have somebody? You run the daily operations of the city. And right now, things really look bad throughout the city. I can answer that question, but a lot of, a lot of feedback comes through our Public Works and those folks. It needs to be coherent, you know, coagulated, coordinated, whatever you want to say, but and attack plan. I know we're getting most of the feedback when things like the cemetery comes in, but that's a multiple acres. We have looked at, looking at third-party people to handle those things. Pops Ferry, for instance, and finishing it like you and I would finish our houses. And there's a lot of opportunities to clean up those things growing through cracks and, you know, especially in the north contract. We got a lot of things growing up through that should have been sealed and, you know, as we replace the infrastructure. But we're looking at one company in, you know, to give us a quote on what it would date to touch these places every 10 days, whether it's up and down Bayview, up and down Pops Ferry from Pentecostal all the way to the I-110 line. Finish it like it needs to be, especially the highly visible. No one likes to stop at a stoplight and look over and see things growing on Highway 90, any place. It's our, it's our ballgame. We need to play the ballgame the right way. But as far as calling in, I can't say that I got somebody just roaming, but code enforcement could help us with that. Yeah. I was just wondering, because the cemetery was one of the complaints I got that we're not cutting the walkway. Well, there were some things that were mentioned too about some of the walkways and some of the equipment that he's using, but possibly extending the resurfacing, some of the, to, you know, to reduce the amount of stuff we have to touch. Every time we cut that, it's about $6,000. It's internal, it's us doing it. Something we're supposed to do. I mean, everything. No, 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 let me say now, it's not a perpetual case. But we do it. But we do it. We do it. All right. But I mean, that stuff with all of it, side streets and downtown, stuff growing through the sidewalk. I mean, just, listen, we the Biloxi city, tourist town. We need to be clean. Safe, friendly, beautiful, it's a deal. That's right. And then we got some places on Highway 90 from Hopkins going to Seal where people threw cans, like in people's yards right there, there's no housing. So can we go in there and pick all this trash up? That's, that's a good question. I've had somebody volunteer that everybody, you know, and again, a push. You're a city employee, no matter what you are, there may be a, someone that volunteers to get us the litter grabbers and, you know, it's your mission, no matter who you are. You see some, some trash or some rubbish, let's get a plan. And somebody said he'd give us four, 500 of those litter grabbers. And that's what, we're going to investigate that. Yeah, we had an incident this weekend. It was all over Facebook about we're not taking care of the point underneath the bridge and stuff like that. So let's just pay attention. I called Sherry Bell and asked who's supposed to be cleaning it up. So she talked to the port and they cleaned it up in about two hours. And so did Billy Ray. I talked to Billy Ray after the same thing. It shouldn't, this was done Sunday and Saturday and were cleaned that day. My problem was it sat there for two or three weeks. That should never happen. The problem, the real problem was, was the things that were, that the homeless have been putting underneath that. If that's, that's, that's the thing that needs to be taken care of. Eliminate that situation. You're talking about on the point under the bridge, right? Yeah. Okay. So I don't care what you do. We paid attention to that on Friday afternoon. What they did with them bags of clothes, they just spread them all over the place. And they gone, same thing. At Oaklawn and Jerry knows as well, they made Lund. Once again, the whole thing grown up again. Can we have the right to go in there and cut her yard automatically? Because once we did, we accept that for a two-year deal?
Two years is expired.
So I mean, how come we hadn't cut it?
Mr. Creel, could you come up just to the mic? Since it's videoed, we want folks to hear the discussion. Thank you, sir.
Anytime that we bring a case to the city council and we get a council resolution on a piece of property to clean it up, then for the next two years, we have the right to go back in and cut the grass again or clean it up again, at least no more than six times per year. So it would be 12 times over a two-year period and to add those charges back to the property taxes as a special assessment. We don't have to bring it back to council again. But after that two years is up, we have to start over, come back in, get another council resolution. And once we get that, we're good for another two years now.
Are we two year or we got to start over now?
We got to start over now. And we've got her written up. We've got her written up and it goes to court later this month with Ms. Lund, that property.
Yeah.
But we try to, we try to use that as much as we can. You know, we don't want to bring cases to the council all the time, so we try to use that two-year period. But the way that grass is growing now, you can, you can cut it one day and two days later, it's covered with a hay or grass again. It doesn't look like it's been cut. All of us have experienced that. We see what's going on. They just cut that light down from your house, Mr. Lawrence, last week, and already it needs to be cut again. So.
They call that rain.
Yeah, a lot of it has to do with what we're experiencing, you know, with the way it's growing right now. But we do have, we do have the right to go in six times a year for two years after a council resolution. We just simply have to put a.
We set this up to redo it again with her.
That's correct.
She's been abusing the city for 19 years.
Yes, sir.
So they want to make sure we on top of that.
We are. Okay.
All right, thank you. And since you're there, do we have anybody that actually checks the trees? I got a call about a fall-the-rond tree that's falling apart, it's an oak tree. With the weather and the salt and everything comes from the hurricane, it takes years for these trees to fall apart.
Yes, sir.
Do we have anybody? Or you, we just got to have them called in by the individuals?
Well, typically, typically when there's a complaint, it usually comes in from either a property owner or somebody that lives next door that's afraid that it's going to fall and hit something. Our city arborist is out on maternity leave right now, so I'm kind of the interim arborist. It's an honorary position, you know?
Well, the discipline is, the one there, Audubon?
Mm-hmm.
Is across from Macklin's house, A.J.'s.
Okay. I'll look at it on my way home.
It's one of them that's falling apart.
Okay.
And another question you can answer is, on the back of Tuxedo, there was a rotten tree and we cut it down because it's about a three or four-foot stump. Now, are we supposed to take them down to the ground or there's something, the stump is all grown up, it's hard to clean?
Anytime we take a tree out, we're supposed to grind the stump out too?
Well, it didn't, so.
Okay.
That's back there on Tuxedo.
Tuxedo, right by the railroad track?
Yeah.
By Oaklawn Place?
Right.
Okay, I'll check on that, Mr. Lawrence.
All right, and I sent you a note, I'm not, thank you, Jerry.
All right.
I sent you a note before about that lady's interest in being on a tree committee. Do you know her or anything? Did you contact her? Because I mean, if you want to take the spot, I mean, if somebody wants to do that, that's fine.
I agree.
And the last question is, I pick up all courts with the LaHobby Lobby. When is that officially supposed to be open?
They've gone in, we were able to give them a permit to go in and do some demolition work to the inside to remove the drop ceiling, things like that. But because that property is zoned NB, it requires conditional use approval. So it's going to the planning commission, it's going to be coming to the city council. But they are proposing to put 15 courts in there. It will not take up the entire Hobby Lobby building. There'll still be about 20,000, 22,000 to 25,000 square feet left for another tenant to go in the other end. But the design has gone through DRC and DRC has approved it up to the level of our authority. So it'll be coming to y'all before we can actually give them a permit to do the work.
One of 24 inside courts and they'll flock to this town.
Yes, sir.
This thing going nuts nationwide.
It has.
And it be inside and cool and have a concession stand, bathroom or anything like that?
That's right.
That's going to be big. I, thank you. Enough, don't want to hurt your head anymore than that.
That's a collective sigh of relief. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Couple of things. I've gotten another call this week about the sidewalks in Edgewater Park. It's an older subdivision. You have a lot of older folks that live out there and I've been mentioning this for a couple of years and I just wonder and worry about the liability. We're aware of this and it's, it's different, I guess, panels in the sidewalk that need to be replaced. A dozen here, two or three there. Just it takes some time and money. It's a small project, probably a contractor could do it, but that's, I worry about the liability and the exposure there. Also, I want to thank the police chief. I understand out in Audubon Place out there and Petty Boy, we, we had a vicious dog and the resident gave me a heads up and contacted you and you got back with him and they're looking at that. I appreciate that. I know it's a concern. He has small children. That concludes my comments. We'll move next to the public agenda. We'll set aside up to 45 minutes for any comments by citizens who wish to speak at this point. You're each allotted up to three minutes. And the, the procedure is just when I recognize you come up to the table. Hopefully the mic will work, hopefully, and you may need to pull it a little close to you, but do sign in with your name and address there on the table. And the clerk has a timer over there. She hits the timer and we're off and running. Most folks take a minute or a minute and a half. Some folks, like my friend in Ward One, might talk a full three minutes, which is okay. But when we hit the three-minute mark, the referee will hit the bell, ding, and that's it. Okay? All right, is anybody on my right, your left, that wishes to speak? Anybody on this side of the room, my right, your left? Yes, sir. Mr. Carney.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Leroy Carney. I didn't come to say what I'm about to say because I, I said this maybe a few years ago to councilmen, some of y'all are not the same people. But I have a deep concern about the grass cutting on sidewalks and, you know, how the grass is growing through the sidewalks. That particularly in Ward Two is terrible. And the other thing I want to say is that I asked the city council to pass an ordinance. You have these people, even the ones that do lawn care services, they cut the grass instead of blowing it back up in the yard, they blow it out in the street and it looks real terrible and they leave it like that, you know? And that, that is, I see that all over town. And what happens when it die? All that stuff debris washes into the drain. It's so simple to get out there like we did in the old days, got a broom, a rake, get a broom, rake it up, put in a garbage can. And, and I feel like you should pass a city ordinance because it's gotten worse. After Katrina, it was terrible. Now it's just everybody do it. They see the other guys do it, they do it. And it's awful. All you got to do is ride around town, Ward Two, and you see what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Mr. Creel, off the top of your head, is that somewhere in an ordinance now? I think it is. All we have to do is just report the contractor. Somebody's, it'd be great if you have a picture of them doing it and maybe the truck with the.
Yeah, clogs up our drains.
Information and everything.
Clogs up our drain.
It does, and that's a stormwater issue.
I see the ditch.
Same thing, if it's a property owner. All right, anybody else on my right, your left? Anybody on my left, your right? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, everybody. My name is Lori Silvestro and I live in the greater Biloxi subdivision. I think many of you are more used to my husband, Bob, being up here talking, but I thought I'd give him a few minutes break. I just wanted to make a point and some observations that, you know, our journey started a few months ago when we, along with our neighbors, witnessed an uptick in bad actors walking our streets who live in the woods, you know, on, on the backside of our neighborhood. We've had items stolen from our properties. We've heard gunshots. We have trash, abandoned shopping carts from Walmart on our street corners. And, and we've allowed them to make us feel uncomfortable, these bad actors. And to a point where we didn't want, we don't want to walk our own streets to walk our dogs or visit neighbors. And my husband has spoken often at these meetings about this, so I'm not going to go into any more deep details about the issues. But let's fast forward, you know, to today. Here we are. And through a lot of hard work, perseverance and networking, a movement has begun. We now officially have a neighborhood watch in the greater Biloxi subdivision. Large property owners in our area have taken action to eradicate illegal trespassing. And local business owners have even pledged support and, and we may be seeing them in future meetings. When my husband started reaching out to everybody who had the influence and the authority to help, he was hearing everything that could not be done. Well, that just made the challenge a little bit more interesting for him because my husband wants to hear solutions, not what cannot be done. And to put it mildly, he got everyone to join the conversation. And when all of these parties actually got together and y'all are in this room, when you got together and communicated with each other for that common purpose, you know, solutions were found and plans were made. And for that, I want to thank everybody who played a part in getting this ball rolling for a great change in our neighborhood. We're excited to see how everything plays out. It's early in the game, but we'll see how it plays out. And we're hoping our neighborhood can be a litmus test of what may be possible for all of Biloxi. But we can't stop, can't slow down. It is time to take back our neighborhoods, one at a time, from the players who are not doing what is best for Biloxi. We can do this because we are Biloxi. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silvestro. Is there anybody else on my left, your right, that would wish to speak? Mr. Markovitz.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So yes, my name is Rodney Markovitz. I represent the Bow View Condominiums and I have a fan club here as well. Um, and I wanna say congratulations to Rodney, Ward Four. It's a great name. You should do great things. So, welcome. Um, I do wanna thank the council as well, Mr. Creel. The last time on our July second council meeting where there was a resolutions made to improve the grounds of the Broadmoor Inn. And at that time was also approved to step forward with possible demolition, if you recall. My assistant, um, wonderful assistant, Arlene Wall, provided each of you a packet which shows pictures that I took yesterday indicating the unsightly, unsightly, uh, view of that facility. And we realized that the property is going through some transition right now um, with the bank and previous, I guess, uh, maybe the bankruptcy court, I'm not too sure who, is involved. And we understand that there's possibly listed for sale in thirty days. And what I'm concerned with, however, is it's been going on for a very long time, as you know, for a couple of years. And it's always somebody's gonna do something sometime. Just like the last lady mentioned, you know, we'd like to see action versus words. Um, I'm not too sure if many of you know who Charleston Heston is, is a great actor. One of my favorite movies is Planet of the Apes. I think this site could probably be in the next sequel. If you look at some of the pictures there, it's looking pretty rough. And on the backside, which I didn't take pictures of, it even looks rougher. It continues to be an eyesore. It's constantly being broken into. And no matter how many chains and padlocks you put on that property, it seems like next day it's open again. So I'm worried about that for our safety. So I'm here this evening asking the council if you'd please, just please, follow through with your resolution you already made in that July meeting and go ahead and finish filling the pool. Thank you, it was drained. That's very nice. Um, so we don't have the bugs, but we would like it filled like they indicated, as well as they mentioned about landscaping. Now, based on the ward report, seven, six, two, and one, um, it sounds like the city has a challenge with mowing lawns. Um, we see that as well. This lawn is well over twelve inches tall. It is out in a right of way. It's along the road. It is pretty aggressively, uh, growing. And I realize that it's August and it'll continue to grow, but if you don't mow it once, it's not gonna grow. I mean, it's not gonna stop growing either, but let's try to get in control of that. Um, so I just ask that you look at the packet information, reference the resolution, and put some action behind it. Um, I just wanna thank you again for your time. I appreciate the council listening to our, our concerns and I thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Markovitz. Is anybody else on my left, your right, that wishes to speak? Mr. Elliott?
Hey, how are you?
Nice to see you. I'd spoken with you and heard you speak at a commencement.
Yeah.
Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to let you know, Brandon Elliott, I'm, I'm here to discuss Coral Breeze Community. Very grateful to be back in the meeting today. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to let you know I'm here. I would love the opportunity. I think my team and I have had an experience, um, on how to better communicate our intentions on what we wanna do with the project. I don't know if this is the right time, but when you bring it up on the agenda, if I could create some clarity for you, that would be great. Um, just so that you're very clear on exactly what we're trying to obtain, what we wanna do, um, on that project. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Anybody else on my left, your right?
Hi, I'm Bob. I just wanted to thank everyone for working together. And after speaking, I would personally like to thank Roy Anderson for calling me and the folks getting together when they realized what was happening and immediately taking action. And as the well-dressed man just said there, Mr. Elliott, I, I think there's some kind, I don't know what's going on, but there's like, let's not build this, let's not do this. But the police don't have money. We have to do something good and I just have one suggestion. If you let somebody build something, tell them, "You gotta clean your parking lot once a week." That's it. Make them hold five grand back, something. I know there's a lot of talk in here about what the city's doing. People are getting away with some crap that own businesses out here. And as far as shopping carts are concerned, I went through the effort. Walmart loses about a hundred and fifty at the so-called neighborhood store, which is anything but our neighbor. I met Mr. Roush on a fishing boat for a minute and he asked me to go up to one of the stores and I spoke to the manager. They don't have a shopping cart loss problem. They have people borrow them and bring them back. Walmart told me, "We can't go on the property. We can't do this. We can't do that." Just saying, moving forward, if you let somebody have a business, tell them from day one, "Pick up your garbage in the parking lot." That, that's all I'm saying is, and Mr. Elliott is there, I don't know him, but I would love to have somebody fill that land in that actually paid taxes and do things. But thank you for everything. Appreciate all your help.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestro. Anybody else on my left, your right? Anybody in the back? Last chance?
Paul.
Mr. Lawrence?
Jerry Creel, give an update on Broadwater, whatever this thing is.
Yeah, we typically don't do this, but... Is... Might you have an update on the...
Yes, sir.
Broadwater Beach, Jerry?
Thank you.
We actually had a meeting with Roy Anderson last week and...
Talking about the, the Broadwater Inn?
That with Roy Anderson, both of them and also the hotel.
Okay. On the, on the hotel, what has happened is that, uh, the lending institution was filing for foreclosure. It was in the foreclosure process. And the, uh, buyer that was, uh, in default decided not to fight it any further. So what's happening now is that they're finishing out the paperwork to, for the lending institution to take it back over. They have assured us that the minute that that's cleared, they're going in, they will cut the grass. They'll secure the building. And we asked them to just remove that shed because that shed seems to be a magnet for people breaking in and they've agreed to do that. But they said that from that point until the time that they sell the property, they will take care of all the maintenance on it to make sure that it's being maintained. So that's where we are right now with...
How, how far along is that?
That property?
Where you at with them taking it over and then cleaning it up?
We were, we were informed about that on July the thirty-first and I had terrorists send that information to Dr. Tisdale so he would be aware of it. And I think he's probably shared it with the people that are out here in the audience that that was what was happening. They told me that it would take at least thirty days for them to complete the paperwork on the, on the takeover. And as I told you before, we have a developer that is very interested in that property. He's contacted the lender to let them know he's interested. And so it'll just be a matter of them getting together on the price for what they're asking for.
Do you know what that court date is? I think when they expect the stay to be lifted or, I don't...
I don't have the specific date, Dr. Tisdale, but, uh, I'll find out.
I was under the impression it was like the second week in August or something, but...
Okay. I'll, I'll confirm that and get that back to you.
Thank you.
Can you have any power working with Roy Anderson?
Yes, sir. Uh, we actually had a meeting with Roy Anderson, uh, last week, uh, attended by the mayor, the police chief, me, Roy Anderson, uh, to talk about, uh, what the steps would be. You know, one of the things that we had been having trouble with is that, uh, Mr. For would not, uh, sign a no trespass letter. Well, he's, he's changed since then. And he has agreed to sign the no trespass letter, which I understand the police department have that now. So, uh, Roy didn't want it to look like we were just going in there and kicking people out immediately. He wanted to give them some notice to get out on their own, to get whatever is left on their own. And so the date that was, uh, agreed to was that the sixteenth. They would be notified and on the nineteenth, the police department would move in and start taking action to remove the people. Uh, Mr. For's wife is arranging to have a front-end loader, uh, taken out there so that whatever is left on the property would be pushed up into a pile. And, uh, Roy said that, uh, Ms. For has asked if, uh, what was left over could be burned. So I put them in touch with our fire chief so that he could review what's out there to see if it could be burned after it's over. So everything is, is moving in the right direction. And, uh, uh, Roy Anderson has been very, very cooperative. So, uh, we, and we appreciate that, that he was so willing to, to agree to the things that we were asking for. Uh, just one point here. We don't have the right to go on the private property. There's two things that have to happen. Either we have to get approval from the city council to go on the private property or we have to have a right of entry from the court to go on there. So when it comes to things like trash and litter on private property, I know it seems like, well, we ought to be able to just walk up there and get it and take it off, but we're, we're not allowed to do that. Uh, the, the police department handles public right-of-ways, streets and alleys and those kinda things. And our responsibility is on private property. And we just have to go through due process in order to get on that property to get it cleaned up. So I, I just wanted to make sure y'all were aware of that.
Appreciate the update. I know everybody glad that, that something's happening and we moving to get it done.
We are.
That's all we, that's all we can do, take the right steps.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Creel. All right, that concludes citizens' comments. We'll move to the policy agenda. We have, uh, two second readings. If the clerk would read item A, please.
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance pertaining to recreational vehicle parks.
Uh, the motion was made by Mr. Glavine and the second was made by myself. Uh, Mr. Glavine?
Yep. Jerry, you wanna elaborate on this or who would this? Peter?
Yeah, I'll take care of it. Um, this is, uh, allowing community development and the police department to sort of keep track of what is going on on, uh, property where, where RVs uh, show up on very large events. The history of this, we, we started back in October uh, and it was gonna be part of a LDO and we were trying to fit in where this could fit into recreational vehicle parks. And it was tabled. And then, I mean, this goes back to Councilman Barrett and Councilman Tisdale. We had some back and forth on, on text message. And what we, what we talked about, I think at that time, the fee was something like forty dollars per space. Uh, we talked about having a minimum fee and a maximum type fee. The, um, and rather than trying to fit it into the LDO, the, the better thing that I came up with was to have a special code section called Special Event Recreational Vehicle Parking. And it would only apply to tier-one events. Otherwise, people could just declare an event at any time and just start parking RVs on their property. So what we've got here is, um, some of the same language. Uh, we put a maximum density of one RV per every seven hundred and fifty square feet, uh, which is, uh, comports with the existing density. Uh, we don't want any RVs within, the, outside of any setbacks that the parcel would have. And we'd want eight feet of separation from any of the RV vehicles. We talked about before, and I remember it was an issue of how far out are the people gonna apply? And they don't know really until the week before how many people they're gonna really have. So what we've done to remedy that is we have a application fee, uh, roughly sixty days out to get your, to get on the list that you're gonna do this. But seven days before the event starts, you'd come in and say, "Okay, I want this many spots for this many nights." Uh, rather than forty dollars, we heard from some of the local folks that, uh, do this a lot. And it's not forty dollars. We've gone down to fifteen. Although I've noticed in looking over this, we have fifteen in one, one spot and ten dollars in another spot. So I just leave that, leave that to the council to decide which one of those y'all wanna do.
Uh, question. Uh, so a permitted existing RV park is included or excluded from this? Is this just people with vacant property that are...
Right.
...allowing RVs to park on? So if I'm a existing permitted RV park that's operating as an RV park, that, it, this does not apply?
This wouldn't apply to you.
It would apply or would not?
Would not.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other, oh, excuse me, was that it?
Not good.
Okay. A couple of questions. So, uh, you said it was listed as ten dollars per night and one, one spot of the resolution and fifteen bucks in another place? I'd, I'd just say if we can agree on ten bucks, uh, we can talk about that in a moment among ourselves, if you wish. Now, Peter, so if, if I have property, and this is for a tier-one event only, correct?
That's right.
Is tier two, three, four, or five? I don't, this doesn't affect me. But if I have a couple of acres, uh, on Highway ninety, then I've gotta let you know for tier-one events that, uh, I've gotta pay, pay you fifty bucks and say, "I'm interested. I'm gonna have some campers here for this next tier-one event, whenever that is." And then seven days prior to that, I'm gonna send you a list of how many spaces I have and I'm gonna pay, write a check for ten dollars per space, per night, correct?
Correct.
So if it's, uh, I'm gonna be here for ten days for cruising the coast, then I'm gonna pay the fifty bucks upfront and I'm gonna pay, uh, a hundred bucks for each slot, each parking spot, correct?
That's right.
Correct. And then if I'm smart at doing this, I'm gonna charge Mr. Glavine, who has a nice big motor home, I'm gonna charge him that hundred bucks for the spot he's in. If I'm a smart business person.
I assume you charge, you might charge a hundred a night.
Might charge it, well, I could. I'm not that smart a business person then. Okay, that's, that's why I'm not in the RV business. All right, uh, I just wanted to make that clear. Uh, is there any other comments, discussion? Mr. Lawrence, anything?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. God, this just don't make sense to me. We can't go on private property and clean it up, but we can draw somebody to use that private property. I don't see how you can do that.
Well, the laws, it exists right now. There's no, there's no avenue for someone just to rent a, uh, a piece of property, uh, for money. That, that turns it into basically a short-term rental. And we know, we know where, where that leads. So, you know, if you allow somebody just to come in for one week and, and you're charging them fifty, sixty bucks a night to park that vehicle there, uh, that's not allowed in our code right now. It's been done for twenty-something years, or at least since Katrina, but, but there's, it's not really allowed in the code.
So what legally right do I have as a city to charge you to use your property? I don't care what they got. I mean, if my buddy comes in, even if it's a tier-one thing and comes in for cruising and he wants to park there, but now all of a sudden the city's gonna charge me to use my property? I gotta pay you to let them park that trailer on there?
Yeah, temporary use of the...
I mean, I just think you, you thought, you can't go pick up the cans on somebody's property. I could charge you if you put an RV on it. Wait a minute. That don't make sense to me.
Well, okay, the, the difference is, if we're going on there to enforce a law, that's one thing. But we issue temporary licenses to people all the time. I mean, we issue temporary licenses to snowball stands that are, are for seasonal use and they have to have a business license. And, uh, we have to make sure that they comply with city regulations, you know, to make sure that they're not creating traffic jams and those kinda things. So, uh, this is a person that's taking their piece of property that has no use on it and now they're gonna have a use on it, be it temporary, and use it for a money-making operation. So I think the, I think the fees are very reasonable. Uh, you're, I'm sure you're gonna see some of the situations like Dr. Tisdale's talking about where, you know, the owner of the property pays a fifty-dollar fee. And then once they determine how many they're gonna have, they'll pay that fee for those and turn around and, and charge those people probably a lot more money than ten dollars a, a unit to, to be on there. But, uh, it's, it's a money-making operation going on to a piece of property where there is no use right now. So we, we do have the right under temporary uses to, to charge them a fee.
It's not a snowball stand, that's the first thing. And how about if they don't charge them at all? There's not a money-making thing.
And, and we're probably gonna get that. There, you know, any...
Everybody will get in there and gouge everybody out of everything.
Yeah, we, we'll, there'll be people who'll try to fly under the radar and try to say, "Well, it's just family members and I'm not charging them anything." Um, but we have to remember that... But we have to remember that when we bring that many people to town, it demands a lot of city services to take care of those things. You know, the Friday and Saturday, you almost can't get up and down Highway 90 for cruising the coast, for example. And, you know, this is just a means of trying to offset some of those costs that are associated with that. I think it's a very reasonable request, and I don't think we're going to have a lot of complaining about it, you know, once people understand the rules about it.
The things they bring in, first of all, the self-sustained, so there's no cost to the city. They don't need anything. They have their own water, their own bathroom, their own everything. 99% of them are self-sustained, so it's not a cost to the city, unless you're going to charge them for riding on the road. Anyway.
Okay.
Yes.
Just a quick question. Is this enforced through our code enforcement or our police department?
Well, it'll be both. In other words, the people who are operating the business will come to our department because we're the department that issues business licenses. And we'll look at the property, we'll review the size of the property, and see how many units they're allowed to put on there, just to make sure that they're within the restrictions that are in this ordinance here. And once we've determined that they are compliant, that they're not creating a traffic jam or anything like that, then we can move forward on it. And then, as far as being out there on the street, you know, police department would, just like they always do, are very good about making sure that we don't have any problems. And typically, other than the traffic on those two days, Friday and Saturday, typically cruising the coast doesn't cause us any problems. They're very good to clean up the property after it's over. They bag it up, they set it out by the road so that it can be picked up after it. We're not having to go in and write up a bunch of property owners, you know, because there's trash spread all over their property. So I think this is good for the city and good for the property owners.
Thank you.
Mr. Guines, Mr. McGilvery, any comments, thoughts? Mr. Glavine, anything else? Mr. Shoemaker? Chief, off the top of your head, if you don't mind, how many tier one events do we have? I'm thinking there's cruising the coast, probably scraping the coast, spring break, Mardi Gras. I don't know, there are probably a couple of more, but it's a handful, is that correct?
That's correct. It'll be under a dozen, probably more. And the next ordinance you're going to look at changes some of that. So six to eight would be tier one, maybe not even that many.
Right, okay. Thank you. And again, this only affects property owners who want to offer their property for this sort of rental for tier one events. Okay, there.
Have something, if I can ask real quick.
Mr. Shoemaker, sure.
Mr. Creel, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but anything else, any kind of, you mentioned snowball stands earlier, anybody selling shirts or any kind of vendor, they have to have a permit or to pay you as well, correct?
They actually have to have a temporary business license, because any time that you're selling anything, and we checked with the Department of Revenue, even if you say you're giving it away, if there's the possibility that taxes are going to be generated on that, yes, they have to have a license.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. There being no further questions, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the ordinance as presented?
Excuse me. Can I get an amendment on the number? I'll propose an amendment that we charge the $10 instead of the 15, and correct that scribbler's error. Okay.
I'll second the $10.
Any further discussion on the $10? All in favor of the amendment as offered? All opposed? That's a 5-1 vote for the clerk. And now I'll entertain a motion for the.
Do we need a vote on it as amended?
We're fixing to do that now.
Okay.
So if I could get a, let's see, we had a motion in a second, I'm sorry. All in favor of the resolution as amended? All opposed? It's a 5-1 vote for the clerk. Thank you. All right, that brings us to the next item. If the clerk would read item B.
Orders to amend the code of ordinances pertaining to special events.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Glavine, and again, I seconded that motion. Mr. Glavine?
As my understanding, I've read through this, this kind of changes some things from the committee reviewing and approving it to designate a person in the police department. Is that accurate, or in a tier one, tier two event?
The events coordinator's always been in place, you know, from the beginning. That's how we start as events coordinator. It does change a little bit, mostly, if you'll read through it, you'll see mostly, we've tried, we thought we might be being a little bit unfair with the way we had some of the events tiered. Like, for example, tier one, 75 extra personnel hours and 1,000 people was a tier one. We moved that because we said from the beginning that this was a living ordinance that we were going to have to make some changes to. So it became apparent to us, like, you know, let's say cruising the coast, comparing cruising the coast to a large run, you know, you really can't compare them. But they were both considered in tier one. Cruising the coast is a whole week, and, you know, like a marathon, you're looking at one day. So we kind of thought, yeah, so we kind of thought, we're probably not being fair. So you'll see that we changed those some. So like the Gulf Coast Marathon, which was a tier one, will now be a tier two. And we're not requiring, you know, require as many man-hours or as many people to be present for it. So we really tried to go in and be as fair as we could with some of those. And then you can look through it, there's some other things in there.
And I've read through it, but my main question, and I agree with all those adjustments, it looks reasonable and logical, and as you mentioned, we said we'd probably modify those as we grew. But one of the big differences is that it's the event coordinator follows, the authority follows in approving these with him, and it seems like it's not the committee anymore. I mean, not the committee that is making that decision. Why is that a better option?
What we're looking at is are smaller events that there's really not a reason for the committee to meet. Most of them are going to be approved, he can do that. If it's something that he disapproves, then there's a mechanism, you know, in place for them to appeal that. We're talking about, just like, just this past week, there was, you know, we're working on five separate events at the same time, and some of those are so small and insignificant. They still take man-hours, they still cost to do it, but it's not anything that he can't go ahead or she can't go ahead and approve. But keep in mind, the actual approval comes through the mayor, and then the appeal comes through you guys. If, whatever we do is going to go before the mayor anyway. All right, so I think a lot of people think that the events coordinator and the commission actually have the authority. What we do is make a recommendation. We make a recommendation whether to, you know, whether to approve it, to prove it with conditions, or to deny it. And that's just a recommendation, and it'll be the same with the events coordinator, it's a recommendation.
All right.
I truly don't expect a lot of problems out of that. If there is, you know, we'll work through them, just like we've said before. This is, this has been huge to try to put together, and I think everybody's done a good job. I know Peter and his team have really had to go in and do some heavy thinking to make this all work and be fair for everybody.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah, thank you, chief. I just want to make a couple of observations. Basically, the special events committee will still meet to review tier one and tier two special events. It kind of gives, the scope of authority is enlarged for the coordinator. There's an exemption for events taking place on the Mississippi Coast Coliseum grounds and everything. So really, it's just a bit more nuanced. After a year's worth of experience, you don't need to call a special events committee together for every event. So, and again, as you pointed out, sort of like the planning commission, you don't make a decision, you make a recommendation up the line, and somebody makes the decision, and there's an appeal process. So I'm good with it. Are there any other comments? Mr. Lawrence?
As the mayor, the last call on this particular thing, I think the president and vice president of council should be involved in that. We set these laws. We got to prove whatever he comes up with. So I think that maybe two of the council members should be on that board, at least know what's going on, and he could bring it to us. If somebody has a problem, it's him making a call by himself. But we got to set these things in place, and we got to push the law. We the law setters of the city. We the legislative body of the city, that's what we do. So I mean, that's just a suggestion.
Right. Mr. Guines, any comment?
Yeah, I've always thought we should have a citizen on there, on this committee, and that's one of the things I've been struggling with the whole time. To me, that's problematic, not having a city, a citizen on there, and I've always called for, asking for one. Thank you.
All right, Mr. McGilvery, anything? Mr. Glavine, anything?
The only thing I would recommend, if that's the desire, I think we could probably submit a resolution or an ordinance or a change or whatever, and we can kind of debate that and put that into effect. I think that's very easily done. I don't know if it really applies to this particular measure.
Yeah, the only tricky part is, like, a member of the council can't be on the planning commission. They can attend, so I don't think there's any issue with attending these meetings to be aware of things and know what's coming up. But the part about making a decision, because then you may help make a decision, it goes to the mayor, then it comes back to y'all, or if there's an appeal, that can get a little tricky.
Yeah, we can only be there as ex officio, basically, but that's where the citizen comes in, because they would be removed from that process. And that's the reason I felt like that, you know, because the citizens, they have to endure cruising the coast, they have to endure Black Spring Break and all of these other events that come along, and they should be part of the process.
And we do have the chamber, I think we added.
Yeah, the Biloxi Bay Chamber has a representative, and I think the.
Coastal Mississippi.
Is it Coastal Mississippi? Okay. So there are two civilians there. I wasn't sure who the second one was. And just for the record, I've sat in on several of these meetings, just I'm curious to how it works and what's said and everything. I don't say anything, I don't inject myself into the conversation, I'm just there. I think we had one last meeting, was it last week or 10 days ago, about 10 days ago, there at the Public Safety Building. So I go just because I'm curious, and they tend to be sure we're doing what we say we're doing. As near as I can tell, we're doing that. I'm sorry, Mr. Shoemaker, I jumped in there before I let you speak. Did you have any comments? Keep up the good work down there in Ward Seven. All right.
Well, that was just a suggestion from me, because the planning commission has no authority to do anything. We do. We build all this stuff in. So if there's a problem with it, then it's our problem. The planning commission is just a board, they nothing. That's all, that's my suggestion to y'all, that we should have some type of representation on the final say-so, not man, one man making a call. Because we're responsible for setting the laws in the city, not both of, we all.
That's correct, but the process calls for a decision from the mayor as the executive officer for the city, and then it comes, should anybody have heartburn, then they can appeal the mayor's decision to us. Otherwise, as I recall, it doesn't come to us. Is that correct, Peter?
I think this past meeting, I think there were five, basically, recommendations. I think everything was approved. I don't know if there are any conditions, but those recommendations still all went to the mayor, and then the mayor approved it. Had he denied one or decided he didn't like somebody, then they would be coming to y'all.
And we've heard about it. And so I think your intention is a good one, George. I don't have a problem with what we're doing now, but, you know, if you wanted to forward it as a resolution for our future council agenda, take a look at it and vote on it.
All right.
Okay, thank you. All right, we call for the question on this item. That's amend the code of ordinances, chapter 12, special events. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, it's approved on a 4-2 vote. That brings us to the next item, resolutions. If the clerk would read item C, please.
Resolution to appoint Paul Tisdale as president of the Biloxi City Council.
I'm all right.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second it.
Mr. McGilvery beat you to it, he's on the record, he needs an alibi, he thinks. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a 6-0 vote, thank you.
I think I had a discussion.
Fire away. But make it brief. Go ahead, all right. If the clerk would read the next item, item D, please.
Resolution to appoint Kenny Glavine as vice president of the Biloxi City Council.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second it.
Lawrence? And Mr. Guines seconds that. Any comments, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Guines? You sure?
Thank you, Mr..
Any other comments by the council? All right, all in favor? All opposed? It's approved on a 6-0 vote for the clerk. That brings us to item E. If the clerk would read that item, please.
Resolution granting a waiver of the one-year requirement for resubmital of a denied application for the establishment of a planned development in Phil District Master Plan for 1654 Beach Boulevard.
Okey-dokey. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it for discussion.
So there's a motion to move it for discussion purposes by Mr. Glavine, and there's a second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Glavine?
I'd like to call up Mr. Elliott. He didn't have a chance to attend some of the previous meetings, and give you a chance to give us some insight.
Very grateful for the opportunity to explain what our plan is here. So I understand there's been some frustrations on how we got to this point, and I really appreciate it. First of all, we do not want to waste the time of the city having to redo and relook at projects of ours. So we thank you for getting to this point. What happened with this project, we, on 5/23 of, sorry, of May of 2023, we had a, we went from CB to PDC zoning and did a multifamily project with the full intention to rent these units, 38 units. They're single-family units, freestanding, really nice entrance, two pickleball courts, and then some community area. So we're excited for the project, we think it's great for the city, and we think it's going to be, going to look really nice on the beach with the entrance monumentation we have planned. As we got started the project, the demand that we saw from people wanting to relocate there and make that their permanent home was just amazing. And we felt that better for the city, better for the home, the community, and better for us if we can convert those people from tenants to permanent residents. Statistically, it's a better thing for the local economy and municipality to have permanent residents over tenants. We can build a rental community again, but the demand for people relocating here today from boomers and from millennials who work from home is just, it's huge. And so our goal was, we went to the city to ask them, what can we do so we can put permanent residents in this community? We came up with, without actually changing anything. So very important to note, the project is exactly the way it was approved, nothing is different, the entrance monumentation is exactly the same, setbacks, utilities, everything. So from an on-paper standpoint, we're asking for this change so that we can put permanent residents and homeowners in these homes, rather than have it as a full rental community as a multifamily project. From a reality standpoint, it's exactly the same as what we have intended. So one of the key things when we looked at this, we had two options. One was, we could condo these out, or we could overlay a fee sample plat over top of what we had planned, just so that the homeowners had owned the land under their home. The problem with condos is it takes a lot of the financing opportunities away from people moving to the market, a big time. So it costs them more money, they have additional fees that they don't need, and it's more expensive. And there's a lot of banks, actually, that won't even do condo loans because they see it as a high-risk loan. So those people have to put larger deposits and so on and so forth. And so to, in order to bring people here and try to solve a national crisis, as you know, an affordability problem, we saw the the doing fee simple parcels as a win-win-win all around. We can get 38 full-time residents. At least, you know, there are people buying it as a as a residence. If they decide to rent it, that's up to them, but it would be 38 homeowners. We would have 38 fee simple lots. And then all the utilities, the pickleball courts, the common area, is all funded by an HOA. So the HOA is 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 not an HOA that's established after and underfunded. It's pre-funded. The homeowners sign off on the monthly fees that they're getting. It's already been proformed out on the cost to maintain the roads and the common area. The entrance is pretty elaborate, so we factored that in as well. And then also the pickleball courts, which we too see that as a great, a great amenity for Biloxi and the coast in in general. So that is fully established, and then they pre-fund it as well at close of escrow. So there's money going into the HOA as these people are moving into the community, plus their monthly fees. And then, so that's it. So all we're asking today is to to allow this zoning to change nothing except give a a a a finance avenue for somebody to to have a fee simple lot where they can get a 30-year mortgage on their home and be a permanent resident in the city of Biloxi. We are still excited to develop and build in the city. I would still love to do a rental project. But if if there's today, people willing and able to move here, I think it's a win-win-win for us, for the city, and then for the people that are looking for a permanent home solution. So and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I'd just like to say, Mr. Elliott, I'm I'm glad you came before us today to share some of this new information. And I I think that would warrant at least a a waiver of this one-year requirement of a resubmital. So I I don't have any further questions.
Mr. Guns?
Absolutely. Well explained. I got it.
Thank you.
I have plenty. First of all, when you say I'll tell you today, what I thought today, we saw the townhouses. We were sent, excuse me, we're sending that. Then we went to the attached townhouses within the that the one we passed. The second one was 1,800 square feet, 18 by 100. Now we got something you say we're gonna do, just 850 square feet for a house. And that's all these people own, was 850 square feet. I tell you my problem with that, we never allowed that in the city of Biloxi like that. We, they all holler about the 5,000 square feet. That's 17% of the 5,000. I tried to do that, to think about if you had put the parking. I don't like it not parking, the common ground. And I think the lot should run all the way back to the fence, the extra 30 feet. Should have almost 25 by 80, which would be 2,000 square feet for each lot. For a person having their own backyard, not a common ground, and have their parking in front of their building. I suggested that to you. I don't know if you're willing to do that. I mean, that makes more sense to me instead of all this common ground. Anybody can park anywhere they want. Anybody can park in anybody's yard. You can't stop them. And I told Rod, that he was in the police department for a long time, and the other one, an inspector. They'd be shooting each other every weekend. I can't park in front of my house. So I think that's a consideration need to be put into this. Because I'm not exactly sure what we have left in the fourth one compared to what we had when we started. Because according to the fourth one, you just have 850 square feet. That's 35, I mean, 34 by 25. And each yard is two and a half, two and a half, two and a half, two and a half, no parking and no backyard. I I just, I have a major problem with that. You want them to own them? Let them own their yard? Let them fence their yard in and go go with that? That's, to me, makes a way better option. Because you said you're not gonna rent them? You're just gonna sell them?
Yes.
Right. So you, and let me ask Jerry a question. Why do we have to change the zone from a CB? There were no no reason to change the zone. Why you can't waiver what we're doing with this here instead of changing the zone? When you do an overlay district, you just kill all rules and regulations. That's the purpose of overlay districts. There's no rules and no regulation left. So I think these things can be worked out. And that's why I talked to you. I'm willing to do that with you anytime you want. I'd have no problem. I don't think it has to be done tonight. That's up to the rest of the council. But I think this could be written correctly and have a resolution on the table that everybody understands. And you understand, we as the council have to vote the same one way or the other. We know exactly what we're voting for.
All right, thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Any comments, thoughts?
And I think you mentioned it, Mr. Elliott. First off, thank you very much for coming up clarifying what the project's gonna be. And I think you mentioned that the HOA will pay all the utilities, all the expenses of everything. The city incurs nothing.
Correct.
That's all I had.
Yeah, I think so. Mr. Shoemaker, anything?
Yeah, it's just a few things. Again, Mr. Elliott, I appreciate you showing up. I think you coming, speaking with all of us council. I think that helps. It really does. And I just have to say, honestly, I was against it the last time. Mr. Elliott and I have spoken at length. And we don't know each other previous. It was over this, you know, when we first spoke. And very forthcoming, any questions I had, and I had a handful of questions. And he was very forthcoming, felt he was being honest. And we had a great discussion about it. And honestly, I feel confident now and and I'm gonna support it. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, couple of quests, couple of questions. Was a letter requesting a waiver submitted in writing to you, Mr. Creel? And was the date of that prior to July or no later than July 26th? Check that because I know it's gotta be submitted within 10 days and. Well, I'm looking at a.
July 24th?
Was it the 24th? Okay, thank you. All right, that answers my question. The next question I have is, is there a substantial change in circumstances relative to the issues or facts? I don't know that there is. You're welcome to make the case. What's different now than what was discussed and acted upon on the 16th? It doesn't it doesn't appear that any of the facts have changed. I may have, I may have missed something, but you certainly have the opportunity, if you want to take a moment and make the case.
You mean the last meeting? Is that what you mean by the 16th?
No, the the last time we took action on this matter, which would have been the 16th, I think, Jerry, is when this this was denied basically on a split vote of three to three. So is is there a substantial change in circumstances related to the issues of facts?
So I feel like when you look at the outcome of what we're trying to do, it is a win-win-win for us, for the residents and for the city in all ways, statistically and from just the appeal of the neighborhood. I think the decision, I'm not saying it was, but I feel pretty strongly the decision was made off lack of understanding of what we were trying to do. And based off some of the questions and concerns that I heard, I believe that those who who looked at the the project and said that this wasn't the right fit, the concerns that they had, I I felt that we had already addressed. I think if it wasn't done from our end, communicated well, that was my intention to do today, to ensure that exactly what we were trying to do is clearly communicated and everybody knows exactly what the facts are.
Right, but but to be honest, nothing's really changed from the last time this matter came up. You just had another opportunity, I guess legally, attorneys would say another bite at the apple. I don't know that it's warranted. That's just me. I'm one of six faces only a mother could love on this side of the the desk here. Is is there any? I'll just leave it at that. I have no more questions. Anybody? Final question, Mr. Lawrence?
I I do. I still don't understand that we can't put these lots together and make them one lot. That makes absolutely no sense to me. That you had that much common ground. 70% of that property is common ground. And if you're making it a lot like you suppose, if they're supposed to be long-term people, they suppose the bodies, property, and state have, there's no reason not to have parking allowed where it's supposed to be and not have a backyard. And that's for me, I thought you were trying to do to change something. So that's, those are the main killers for me right there. You're basically selling 850 square feet with the house that's on. That's it. And that's a that's a major problem for the home, the HOA, anybody handling that. That's the problem.
Understood. So the 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 lots actually extend 20 feet past the house right now. There is a common area behind those. I would be totally fine if if we do an approval contingent on us extending the lots all the way to the outside property line. So I think you're, I don't think it will impact the community at all. If the homeowners, I I, they already do have their own backyard, although there is another 10 or 15 feet on one side and about 25 feet on the other, we could add to it. And so I would be totally fine with approving this contingent upon extending the lot lines to the outside lot line to incorporate those into the into the fee simple lot.
And so I think that the parking should go with the property. Whatever my apartment is, I'm in a house, whatever I own. And if I had two cars, I mean, I can't be parking your place and you have no place to park. That's 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 another problem. You gotta have designated parking. When you start building, you wanna call them subdivision, you wanna call them condominium, separated motel, whatever words y'all use. You know, it, to me, it should be a lot with the parking and the whole thing should be 80 feet long. And I mean, if you could do that, then I think even Paul might agree with me. That's fine. But the other way, common ground or no parking, I mean, that's that's a disaster happening, is all that is. And you can't do anything about it. It'd be a lot of trouble. So I mean, I would suggest that to you, that you need to look at that. And and you better be careful about voting for anything tonight. Because if you don't change some of this stuff, I mean, you you can't win. If Paul and I vote against it, you 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 can't win. I don't know if you know it, Jerry, but I didn't tell you, take super majority, take five votes to pass anything in a super majority. No matter if they're not here or not, the rule stays, a super majority of seven is five. So I'm just telling you, that's why I actually look at everything, bring it back. But like, unlike Paul, I don't say, well, you change really anything to accomplish what you want. And I mean, I don't know why we can't just do this in a CB. I'm not in favor of changing. That's a CB area. It's always been CB. Been hotels, motels, and apartments, straight out, always been that way. So there's no mistake in the zone. There's no need to change it. So why we can't, that's why I told you, just why we can't work with inside the CB. I mean, it just makes sense to me. You know, that's why I was thinking if we could all get together and ask all the questions we want, get everything laid out, and actually pass the resolution that we know was solid for the that piece of property, you get a way better chance of getting everybody to vote for that. You look like all you want is five.
I think you got through it in a month.
I'm not, I'm not sure it is five, but.
And say a super majority is 4.9. It takes five votes.
All right, well.
Okay.
I'm gonna trust but verify on that.
Well, you you don't want to get beat. I'm just telling y'all.
Let's let's not get.
If you do what you're doing right now.
Not getting excited here.
Right.
All right. Can I go to Mr. Guns? I know you're itching for a comment.
This man came and he's investing in our community. He went through the process, and there's nobody out here in opposition. It went unanimous in the planning commission. And I believe we should be on that same page of someone investing in our community, especially in a community that 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 needs that help. So I'm like David Shoemaker. I I heard our developer. And I think we need to support this. And George, I think you're wrong on that one. You told Paul.
I'm not wrong. You don't want me to be right again. You're gonna kill it. So be careful.
That concludes my report of my statement.
And as far as the planning commission, we don't have a planning commission.
Oh, we don't?
No, that's 12 votes, 12 votes, 12 votes.
Let's not wander off the topic. Let's not wander off the topic. Uh, Peter, on this super majority or whatever, it's.
No, I mean, on certain zoning matters, if there's a letter asking for there to be a super majority, that's the case, but I mean, but if that's the case, the matter could be tabled till you get seven people anyway. But I I could look at that real quick and just see if.
Well, I'm I'm looking, I can't quote you the section, but I'm looking at something that deals with waivers. And it says, standards for granting a waiver. The decision-making body may grant a request for waiver of the submittal time limit only upon a finding by at least two-thirds of its membership that substantial evidence is presented that demonstrates several things here. And I'd refer to one of them. So that's, that's the only place where I I could see two-thirds. And it, it's gonna be, I I don't, let's see. It's gonna be close to 23 dash 2 dash 4. It's gonna be an ordinance.
Grant me. I'm trying to, I'm trying to be nice, trying to help him. It's five. It's that's seven members on this board.
Yeah.
And you can't walk out the room. You can't abstain. It doesn't matter. It takes five out of the seven to vote. I know we've done all that stuff before, and they made the dance, went out the hall, and it, doesn't matter.
I want the, I want the attorney to earn his, whatever he's making an hour since he's sitting here.
I want to hear something that's his opinion. That's my problem I have with that. And I'm trying to be fair to you since you come. I have. And I'm, I would like you to.
You want to just table it till Dixie comes back? You want to table it till, I'll I'll move to table it to to next meeting.
Well. To the next meeting? It doesn't matter.
If there's a motion to table to the next meeting, which will be two weeks from tonight, is our next regularly scheduled meeting, which would be the, what, the 20th of August?
Yes.
We could do that. So there's a a motion on the floor to table it.
I'll second it since Mr. Lawrence is suggesting that we do that. So I'll second it.
And would you consider changing and running them lots together like that? Would you look at that while you, right?
Questions?
While you're doing this, since we table it, right? Would you look at that yourself and then this plan for you? I know you're in there to make money. I mean, I understand that. I know you like to run 30, 32%. That's how you make your money. But I'm just saying, would you even consider just making one solid lot, 25 by 80 or roughly, whatever it is? I'm not exactly sure what the feet supposed to be. I just kind of added up the length of a car, put the parking in front of them, and just add. That should not affect you.
Dr. Tissier. Can we carry that motion, please?
Let me, let me make this suggestion. Since our next regularly scheduled meeting is on the 20th, we have a meeting next week dealing with budget, which will probably be at 1:30. Usually those last 60, 90 minutes or whatever. If you could meet with us, you could meet with us. We could have another workshop at 3 o'clock to talk about just these things.
I'm fine with that. I wouldn't have a problem.
If that's good with everybody.
I'm just trying to be nice and mistake you. That's all.
So we do have a motion on the floor that's been duly seconded to table this until August 20th. Call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? It passes on a four-two vote to table it?
What's that?
Are you gonna be here?
I just figured we could get it done tonight.
Until August 20th, Mr. Elliott, that meeting will be a 1:30 meeting on the 20th. And did we want to have a workshop after the budget?
I don't think so.
No?
I think, I think, my honest opinion, I think he was here tonight. He spoke. I know he answered all my questions. I think he asked, answered everybody else's questions. Quite frankly, I don't know what everything else, the five-two, I'm new. I don't know about that. However, Mr. Elliott, I appreciate you coming. I think everybody up here, for the most part, appreciate you coming. You'll have to come back, I guess, in a couple of weeks, unfortunately, but maybe we can get it resolved then.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Okay, if the clerk would read the next item, item F.
Resolution on rehearing of conditional use approval for property identified as 1654 Beach Boulevard.
I'd like to.
I'd like to, um, make a motion to table this one as well, uh, until our next regular meeting.
You gotta put it on the table first, you're making that motion...
Alright, there's a motion by Mr. Glavine to table this, there's a second by Mr. Gines.
Motion to, I, I'll make a motion for discussion. I would send my motion to table, make a motion for discussion.
Alright, so there's a motion to discuss item F.
I'll pull my second.
A second by Mr. Gines, Mr. Glavine, your...
Motion that we table it until our next, uh, regular scheduled meeting.
Which would be August 20th. Alright, so there's a motion to table it to August 20th.
Mr. Gines.
Second by Mr. Gines, okay? Any discussion?
I'd like to pull out something. Item B, again, this is a resolution over here. I'll make a...
So that should be resolution on rehearing of, uh, planned development infill?
You gotta put them both together.
Yeah, can I just amend my motion to table and in addition, uh, correct the scribblers' error, um, for the August 20th?
I'll second.
Motion to reconsider.
So we had a motion to correct the scribblers' error, well, you don't need to...
No, it's in the same motion to table it, in, in addition to tabling it to correct the scribblers' error, uh...
Gotcha.
By the time of our next meeting.
We can fix that.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, uh, there being no further discussion, all in favor to table it to August 20th, all opposed? Okay, that motion to table passes on a 4-2 vote. Brings us to item G, if the clerk would read item G.
Resolution appointing Leroy Carney to the Biloxi Housing Authority Board.
Go move.
There's a motion by Mr. Gines, is there a second? Second by Mr. McGilvery. Any discussion?
Great guy who's here, spoke earlier, uh, Mr. Carney, uh, you have any words of wisdom for us, Mr. Carney?
Who's JF? Who's this one? Brandon Elliott, who's JF?
Good evening again, uh, I just wanna say that when I received a phone call from the mayor, it took me back a long, long ways, uh, we just live off Elmer Street there, little little street called Swan Lane, some of you probably remember that, I know Mrs. Gibbey will remember Swan Lane. The Wrights live down in the bottom. And this gentleman came by the house, Mr. Morris, he used to be over the Biloxi, running the Biloxi Housing Authority at Biagusta, he was the manager over there. As a little boy, he came by and he told my mother that they had a unit for us. And let me tell you, when he said that, I thought I was moving to Hollywood. Because at the time, it was like, uh, three boys and my mother had two girls, so it was five of us in a little old shotgun house. And when we went to Biagusta, it was like going to Hollywood. We had five rooms, one downstairs, two bedrooms upstairs, two bathrooms, so it was like heaven. And I, and I wanna say I'm gonna do the best I can on that board, uh, a very passionate, you know, Biloxi Housing Authority gave a lot of people's a start in this community. And West End, Bayview, East End, even East End, some of you probably remember East End. And I just wanna thank the mayor and I'll do the best I can to serve you all on that board, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Any other comments? I know Mr. Carney now for a number of years, he's a good man, he'll do a fine job, all in favor? It's approved on a 6-0 vote for the clerk. That brings us to the consent agenda. Move it.
Second.
There's a motion by, uh, Mr. Lawrence and a second by Mr. Gines. We'll start with Mr. Lawrence.
On, uh, Mike, on, on G, the Sanga, or any of y'all wanna talk about it, Fofo?
Good.
How, how far along are we on the Sanga?
Let me tell you.
We're trying to get it reopened.
Alright.
I know this is another something else we doing.
This is the, the repair of the plaster that has been damaged from the stage to about 20 or 30 feet back. Yeah, and I think it's been bid and, and looked at and examined and from a historical standpoint, this is the right thing to do. And then we can go forward with the, the remainder of backstage and, uh, the things that we've already done. We've done most of this in-house, we cannot do the plaster, to reconstruct some of these columns and so forth, that right at stage level, you know, from the balconies on in. So, I think it's 18,000, is that what it is? 13,000, yeah.
This is one of the last things we have to do? Is there anything after that?
Yeah, there's a, a number of audio visual and some of these other things that we may be in a fundraising mode in order to do some things, but, uh, basically, uh, yeah, it, it's wrapped up, uh, other than what we wanna add to the existing, a number of items that will be, been identified from talking to people from the, from the junior college and the performing arts center, where they have been struggling, uh, lately to do the productions they do, with some of the, you know, fiber optic things that, that they are reinstalling, even that's a $40 million building, so we're taking advantage of what they say we need to set up for productions for plays and those kinds of things that this may attract. So internally, I guess, you know, uh, the infrastructure of the production is what we're trying to do, and of costly items, as well as some of the video wall and, uh, uh, some of those things behind the stage. But this is the most critical of the infrastructure, uh, the last of the infrastructure things we need to do inside. This is that pair?
Alright, thank you. And the age of right beneath it, it would, uh, a kind of Biloxi police staff, administrator due to, of the court, uh, these people here, they, they don't get paid from the court. I mean, we used, we have 30 people in the court system. Like, is he actually an employee or just your employee?
No, they're, they're all my employees, they really don't have anything to do with the court other than they've made them...
They served the court.
They, 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 well, they do serve the court in that officers are able to swear to their affidavits in front of them, so they don't work in the court at all.
All that, that's money paid under the, the police department?
Yes, sir.
Nothing to do with the money we losing in the court system?
No, nothing to do with the court.
Yeah, could we, trying to figure out why we can't get that straight. On these here, uh, Fofo and V and, and W, this is probably the time I think I would ever paid attention to it or never to see it before. You got the mayor and the president of city council on both of these.
This is all about, this is all about the, uh, ARPA funds and the four projects that we're finishing, two of them are already finished and two of them are not quite finished. You know, we just opened bids and awarded a contract for the, the well and the Tanglewood project is moving along. But unfortunately, the, um, and, and we're, we're one of most cities in, in the state that are dealing with this. They set an artificial dates of when these monies had to be obligated. And, and they're had to be obligated in this month. Well, we're not gonna be finished with these projects in terms, and so, so just in case the, the, um, MDEQ has allowed us to do this MOU deal, to go, to set the record that we've, the money's obligated, so we, they can't pull it back. So it's just an administrative thing we're going through, may, this is what MDEQ told us to do in order to obligate, have the money obligated on the books, so it can't be withdrawn.
Is that why the city council presidents had to be on there?
Didn't make any sense to me either, but this is what they came up with for a way to have a record that...
So they're making us put our thumb on the money?
Money's not gonna get clawed back.
We're just putting our thumb on the money, right?
It sounds, it, it sounds like we're formalizing...
Yeah.
...a commitment here that requires us to commit these funds, even though they're not expended before the deadline expires and, and we lose those funds, correct? So all we need is an understanding on the books that, yeah, we're gonna use it for whatever the purpose is we're using it for.
Yeah.
Okay, but I, I do have a question on that same item, and this is just, I noticed that, uh, it's approving this MOU, let's see, this is, we're talking V, correct? Yeah.
Correct.
On V, approving this MOU obligates, uh, the grant, the MCWI grant funds of 311,345 dollars and ARPA funds, the same amount, I was wondering, is that a typo or was that intention?
MCWI is, is, is just the project entity that the ARPA money was put out.
Okay. Alright, I just wanted to be sure it wasn't a scribblers' error, we've had enough of those tonight.
One is, that's upset of the other.
Gotcha, thank you. Alright, anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, on, uh, Y, uh, hopefully we have somebody gonna buy the building? The old public works property and, uh, the Falcon Place and everything else?
This is, uh, this Main Street Building LLC, they had an option on it last year.
Yeah.
They let the option go and they wanted to start another option under the same term, so we're just starting a new option for another year.
So they, they could put up front money?
Put up, uh, a thousand a month.
Okay. You know, and there's, uh, Sherman Kane and Doc, uh, is this the hurricane money?
So, no, this is a Gulf Coast Restoration Fund. We've submitted this project in the past, uh, we just, uh, spriff, spluffed it up a little bit more with a little better write-up and shoving it, shoving it in again this year and the portal, portal was closed last Friday. And, uh, we've spoken to our legislators and they are gonna support this project.
Question? Question, excuse me, George, again, on, on this particular item. Um, so it says it's, uh, we're applying for a $3 million grant and there's a 1.5 million dollar match, what's the source of the local match?
Well, uh, to tell you the truth, I'm trying to remember.
Well, I'm, my first thought was, is, was, could be the general fund, I don't know, could be the port.
Yeah, well, could, definitely could be the port.
Yeah.
So I was thinking it's probably, it doesn't say, right, it doesn't mention that in there, but I was thinking...
Harrison County Port Millage.
Okay, the Port Millage, okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
That's it.
That's it, alright. Mr. Gines, we're seeing less of you. Uh, Mr. McGilvery, any questions?
No, sir.
Alright, Mr., what's your name? Mr. Glavine?
Um, just, just one point, um, on the Lamy Street project, uh, this is to close, uh, that, that project. Understand, we, we kinda saved a little bit of money, uh, on this project, uh, I do have a couple of other roads nearby, possibly Gay Road, which is right across the street, uh, the residents right across the street seeing Lamy being paved or wondering, are we next? Now, we share that road as well, uh, with the Iberville and, and, and us and I guess the county as well.
The county requested us, and that was a county project, right? So the county requested us and the Iberville to be one-third partners in the project. So is the county gonna do the same for these?
Um, I'm gonna open that discussion, just to see where Dan is on this, um, to, to see what, what, if anything, um...
That's doable if it's, it's the case. Now, maybe a two, a 50-50 because you're, you're not talking about the Iberville anymore. But we can just, we can run that through just like the last one, if the county's willing to...
I think this could be a third, a third and a third, you know, cause the Iberville's on one side of Gay Road, we're on the other side. So that's, that's a strong possibility. The problem is, as it wraps around, it's a little bit longer that, you know, that portion when it gets out of us on that shared road and it becomes the Iberville, that's something they're gonna have to, you know, consider. Kristy, I, I don't know if you're aware of this, this particular road and how it wraps around into the Iberville and it exits out of Biloxi. Okay, I just, I just, are y'all okay with me making contact with Dan, just seeing, seeing how he feels about it?
Kristy will do it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shoemaker?
No, sir, I don't have anything.
Man a few words, thank you. A couple of items, on item U, this is, uh, MDEQ for Restore Act funding, this is for the Point Cadet Marina and, uh...
Phase three, this is phase, that gets the key to that, that's phase three.
That's correct.
We just finished and opened it up. Phase two was approved in the portal a year ago, we're still working our way through the sub-agree, sub-grant agreement and so forth. That funding will be available shortly, 5.5 million.
Right.
And then this is phase three, we're just putting it in the portal now for next year.
Right, and, and this resolution is amending an earlier resolution because they left out a local match of, uh, $2 million, what's this?
It's, uh, Port Millage.
Port Millage, okay, that's, wanted to be sure, thank you. Then, uh, on item B, double B.
Peter can take that one.
No, well, I think, no, we, we already covered that, scratch that. That leads me to double C, C.C. Rider. Um, this deals with, uh, correct a grant amount from the Mississippi Department of Transportation. Um, and it's in there, it says, the res, the resolution that it references earlier was Resolution 389-11, so from 2011, is that correct?
So what, what...
Okay, that's all, that's all I needed, that's all I needed to know, I just wanted to be sure that date was right, what...
It is.
Alright, it's that old, thank you.
Back and reconciled the amounts that they set for our match.
Gotcha.
They were wrong in a couple of months, so they're updating it, that's money that'll come back to us.
Okay, on item, uh, Peter, on item D, D, double D, I just wanna be sure it's not a typo on the top line of page three of that resolution? If you would check that. I think it was a cut and paste error.
Which word?
It's gonna be at the top of the third page.
Yes, the second word on that page?
Right, that's, it's...
That is, uh...
Is that a typo?
We would ask for, uh, scribblers' error.
Scribblers', okay, alright, Mr. Mr., we're keeping Mr. Scribner busy, alright, I just wanted to be sure you were aware of that. Uh, then on item FF...
And that, that error will be to change the second word to tivally.
Correct.
Okay.
Alright, then item FF, this is for, uh, an MDA grant application for, uh, restoration funds to repair city hall, is, is there a local match required on that or no?
No, no match required, no. That, we'll see how that project can, uh, works out.
Cruzes.
Went to MDAH and they, uh, they weren't really talking about more than like a couple hundred thousand dollars, that wasn't gonna get us started. And, um, well, this may not fare well in, in MD, in, in this particular portal, this particular source, however, uh, the, one of the legislators, Belcher, tells me that a likely outcome would be for them to do a direct legislative approval.
Okay.
And just to move that in, move it out of that program and into, but to do that, we gotta get the project in play. We spent, we spent a little money, very little, but 18,000 dollars, I think, to do a very, very detailed historical...
Saw that report, I recall, I think, in this...
Building.
Right.
Which gave, uh, an estimate and that's what we're working against, the 2 million.
Okay, last, last one for me on the consent agenda and then I'll get to Mr. Gines if he has any, uh, items. On GG, uh, the city was awarded a $3 million Restore Act grant, men's a period of performance to terminate June 30th, 2024. So was the work completed by 2024? It was, okay, that's all I needed to know, thank you. Alright, Mr. Gines?
I have nothing, I thought about godaddy.com, but that was, uh, I think I was resolved.
Okay.
I had one quick question on EE.
Echo, echo?
The one we got, we are restarted grant with the MDA, my pop say extension, what are the restart of grant? EE.
Okay, I got it, uh... We have three million dollars. One of the many fund sources we're using for pops fair extension is a three million dollar grant from the Gulf Coast Restoration Fund. And like all those city, state funds, they have to be, if they have not been used, they have to be re-obligated. So there, that, that has been, the same three million has been re-obligated.
So all we keep talking about the three million, it's the same three million dollars?
Same three million.
Okay.
Just spread out all over the sheet, okay.
Okie doke. We'll, I'll call for the question, we'll vote on the consent agenda. And again, I'll, I'll come around and ask for exceptions. All in favor of the consent agenda? It's approved on a six-oh vote?
None.
For the clerk?
None.
All right, any exceptions, Mr. Gines?
None.
Any exceptions, Mr. McGilvery?
No, sir.
Any exceptions?
None.
Mister, okay, any exceptions? Mr. Shoemaker, still having fun, and I have none. So we're all good on the consent agenda. That brings us to code enforcement hearings. Mr. Creel, I know you thought we'd never get to you.
It's okay. Nope.
Okay. Item A on the agenda, Coastal Development Group Incorporated, fourth sixteen Shell Street. That case has been resolved. Item B, Eden Center LLC, two-oh-two Fountain Lane, that case has been resolved. Item C, Gulf Shore Hospitality Incorporated, nine-fifty Beach Boulevard, that case has been resolved. Item D, Michael Clark Hester, twenty-five ninety-two Old Bay Road, this property's still in violation.
All right, is anybody here to speak on this matter, two-five-nine-two Old Bay Road? Or is Mr. Clark present?
I understand he, he was here. He had, this case has been before you before. He told the council that he couldn't do anything, he just didn't have the means to do anything. When we went in to actually do some work on the property, his son had passed away, so we gave some more time. And he said he couldn't wait tonight, but the property's still in violation, so.
Would, we meet again in two weeks, would?
I have no objection to that, if you want to, if you want to amend extension.
Is there a motion to extend it till the next council meet, regularly scheduled council meeting, August twentieth?
We'd do that.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Mr. McGilvery.
Okay.
And a second by Mr. Gines. All in favor? All right, so he's got two weeks.
Okay. Item A, William Vuho et al., five-forty-four Ranning Street, that case has been resolved. Item F, Sharon F. Huffman and James A. Smith, Zero Beach Boulevard. This is at the foot of Seal Avenue. We would ask for thirty days on that.
Somewhere.
They did cut the tree, there was a tree on the property that had fell. They cut the tree up, but they set it to the edge of the property. And as we know, the contractor won't pick up trash on a vacant lot, so that's why we need some more time.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Gines and a second by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion, all in favor? Approved on a six-oh vote, thank you.
Item G, Intuition Properties LLC, two-forty-nine Howard Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item H, Jordan Development LP et al., five-oh-one Howard Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item I, Julia Nieto Gomez, nine-oh-six-six North Oak Long Road, that case has been resolved. Item J and item K are side by side. Ray Roy Ray LLC, two-thirty-five and two-thirty-nine Howard Avenue, these properties are still in violation.
All right, is anyone present here to speak to this matter? Two-thirty-five Howard Avenue, Ray Roy Ray LLC.
What is the violation?
It's over.
I'm just asking, what is it?
What we've talked about at the very beginning of this meeting, we, overgrown lot.
Fast cutting?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Okay, okay.
So that, you said they're still in violation?
Yes, sir.
Right, right, right.
All right, there being no one here to speak, this hearing is closed.
Item L, Darla Jean Hansen Life Estate, eighty-three ninety-two Boss Hesley Road, that case has been resolved.
Thank you, Mr. Creel, good work. Lot of resolutions to these, several of these cases, appreciate that. Is there a motion to accept the routine agenda?
I move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Gines. Any discussion?
Comment out there. He's back row, back row seat. Give us some money this week. I mean, that, you got it in the hopper, we need some cash.
Good evening, council. Right now, we had our conference call with MEMA last Thursday, and they were estimating one-point-nine million dollars coming to the city. But that was based on estimates by our contractor about how much work they would do in July and August and September. Those estimates by our contractor were a little bit overinflated, so we adjusted them down to what we believe it will be. So we do not have the answer at this time on our next round of funding from MEMA. But I should, I will have that by the next meeting on August twentieth.
So you adjusted it down from a million nine?
Well, MEMA will, yes, sir, because it was based on some inflated estimates of how much work the contractor would do, based on their estimates that they gave us. And they're just not doing that much work.
That's kind of comic. We went through that early about overestimating, and they give us sixty days of overestimated funding, and they work it out as it really rolls down.
That's right, they do a netting, so they, they give you, they can't give us more than sixty days of advanced funding. So if they see that we're starting to get beyond that, and they say, well, go back and look at the estimates from your contractors. They adjust it to try to keep it within that sixty window band.
Yeah.
We're still sixty days up. Yes.
It's not going to affect anything we're doing.
No, sir, not at all.
All right, and anything else, that's it?
That's it for now, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, council.
Mr. Gines, anything?
No.
McGilvery, anything? Mr. Glavine?
No.
Mr. Shoemaker? One question you may or may not know, this is an item on the docket, Utility Service Company. Does utility maintenance? We paid them twenty-five grand, I just never noticed that before. And you may not be able to answer that question, I'm just asking, I'm just wondering what they do. I'll get with you later on that. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move.
We didn't, we didn't vote on it.
Oh, we need to, I'm sorry. We need to vote on the routine agenda. All in favor of the routine agenda? It's doing so well, too. It's approved on a six-oh vote. All right, a motion to adjourn? I haven't heard a motion yet.
I'll move it.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Glavine wants to go home, Mr. McGilvery wants to go home.